Alright everyone, you will go ahead and call this study session about to order at 6:00 PM.
Before we start with the air unit going in the room, please make sure your microphones are on so that everyone will be able to hear you, and you can pull it closer if you need to.
Would you like to all stand for the questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can remind everybody to turn your cell phones off, put them on you, and then put them away. City Clerk Domingo, if you will take the roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams. Reed. Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder. Here. So our study session this evening is to interview our candidates that have submitted an application in for the vacancy for Precinct 5. We're gonna start with Ms. Vivian Davis, and so if I can have Mr. Johnson, Ms. Lucier, and Ms. Feel, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Bio.
Bio, oh sorry about that. If you would like to follow our Assistant City Manager Yvonne Ridge out, and then she will call you in, and we are ready to interview you. Welcome, Ms. Davis. Yes, so we did get your application, and I'm hoping that council members have had the opportunity to review. We are just gonna ask you some few questions, and we're asking the same questions of the other candidates. So we're just gonna go around council chambers to ask you the questions, and then after we are done, then we're gonna swap candidates, okay? So Ms. Davis, what would you like us and Precinct 5 residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
First, I'd say thank you.
Is there a green light showing?
Yes, okay. I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to talk with me, and as you know, I think I know everyone here, I'm a longtime resident of Albion, so there's a lot that you know about me, as well as my resume is a little long because I've been here a long time, but something that I would like for you to know about me, one thing is sometimes as citizens, as community partners, as community leaders, we don't know what we don't know, okay? And one thing that I have learned is that a lot of the things that I didn't know about 49224 area until I got on the various boards, Board of Directors like the Calhoun County, the Healthcare Alliance, as well as Fountain Clinic and things like that, I didn't know that Albion has one of the highest rates of lead poisoning for our children, and I didn't know that Albion has one of the largest rates of diabetes, obesity, set their lifestyles. I didn't know that we have problems with our population that causes us sometime to live 10 years less than 49068 area. Do you know where 49068 area is? That's a reality. Those results came out in 2022, in February. So some things that you may not know, sometimes it hurts us when we don't know things, that's one thing. And I know that there's a social divide in Albion, I know that the older group is trying to move on, but my premise to you is experience matters. Experience, connections, relationships, and things like that really matter when it comes to our community. If we're not at the table, a lot of times we're left off. If I wasn't at a table someplace, I wouldn't have been able to write a grant for $50,000 for Albion in terms of connections, and we did get the grant. We also have gotten a lot of money for the COVID and things like that, so things that you don't know, or things that you don't know about me, is my connections across the state, my connections across the county, really where I go, Albion goes, so I don't know if you know that, but that's one thing. Ratio togetherness is something, respect for others, I have, everybody knows, you know, I have respect for others. I can get along with people, I can get along across the table, I can get along with people who are younger than me as well as older than me. So maybe you know those things, but that's something that honesty, sincerity, and no hidden agenda. I really don't have a hidden agenda for this, I'm not trying to build my resume. You know, I do this out of the goodness of my heart in terms of working at Juneteenth, Rotary, Lions Club, whatever I do, is basically out of the goodness of my heart without repercussions or an agenda to build my resume. I have an understanding of budgetary constraints of Albion and understand them in terms of, and receive more information after reading the strategic plan, and that is very well laid out, congratulations, it's very well written, gave me new insight in terms of what the city is facing, you know, among other things. Social determinants of health is one of my platforms, and I can talk more about that, as well as my ability to write grants, I do write grants and I can help out at one time or the other, and follow directions and get the job done and get the grants that we are looking for. So some things that you desire, my desire to serve is to offer my services, offer my talents, offer my experience, and that's very important.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Okay. What would you like us and Precinct 5 residents to know about? Oh, sorry. What is your level of involvement in the community?
Are you sure you want to? How long are you anticipating on this? Do I have a time limit?
Yes, with four, yes, with four candidates, keep it at about two minutes per question.
Two minutes per question.
To make sure we have time to get through all questions.
Okay. My level of involvement really is extensive in the Albion community. One of the things that takes up a lot of my time is Rotary. I'm on the Calhoun County Board of Health, and I'm on Health Alliance, and I'm on, I just recently got on the Fountain Clinic Board, and the Fountain Clinic Board is something that, you saw Fountain Clinic at Juneteenth Saturday, the first time that they've been there, because my premise was that, you know, we don't know about these services, we don't know we can go to Fountain Clinic and get eyeglasses, or we don't know that Albion Health Alliance has an ophthalmologist there now, or an ophthalmologist there now. So my extensive involvement in Albion and in the various areas is something that is that going to be noticed, you know, and people, people across the county really respect me and they will listen. And the director came, and she said, I was, I said, "Are you here by yourself?", and I think she might have had the secretary that I don't know yet, but yeah, she came because I said Albion has to be represented, we need to know what's going on in Calhoun County because a lot of times we're left out if we're not at the table, right? So NAACP, you know, Rotary, Lions, Sister City, and it goes on and on, and okay, I think my two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed. Please describe any public service experience that I know there is lacking.
Two more minutes, right, that's all. Public ser-, oh, one of the first that, you know, one of the first that was most significant is the Board of Education, I did serve on the Board of Education, I've been on the National Board of Education as well as the Michigan Education Association Board of Directors. So public service, the Review Board, I guess that counts as public service, doesn't it? Yeah, the Review Board is something that I'm on, NAACP, yeah, those kind, as well as the Health, all of the Health Boards I'm basically on. And the other public service from Albion that I represent Albion is the Kellogg Foundation Board to give scholarships to young people, and of course, my premise is, who are Albion students? Why can't Albion students? So they did develop a scholarship just for students going to opportunity school. Now we have to get people to apply, but there is money there to go to go to college, basically a full ride.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Okay, I might go out of order a little bit, but I wanted to ask number seven, what do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
Okay, I knew that question was coming, so. The top three priorities, one of the priorities, of course, is budget. We need money to do what we need to do, we need money for infrastructure, we need money for roads, buildings, appearance, maintenance for homes and things like that, so budget constraints have, has really stopped us from doing a lot of things that we need. Of course, we have a millage coming up which is going to help, but budget is one. Health disparities is what I just finished talking about in terms of food insecurity. Albion is one of the largest areas in terms of distribution of food products on a weekly basis. We outweigh Battle, I mean, we outweigh Marshall and the local areas. Lead abatement information, our students, our students encounter lead, and I asked the director, Rod Alden, a couple of days, where is this lead coming from? Is it from the water, or is it from where? And it's from the paint, it's the old houses, because we have a lot of old houses and a lot of our students live in older homes, and there is lead in the paint. Reactivation of the Neighborhood Watch Program is something in terms of identifying the homes that have the lead problem, as well as educational awareness for parents and the schools. Housing upkeep and upgrade, Albion Chronic Disease Task Force, I don't know if you know about, this is a new task force that is, that is chaired by Rod Alden, who is the president of Albion Health Alliance and the director, but chronic disease, so really taking a look at Albion's chronic diseases in terms of what can we do as a community in terms of chronic diseases, diabetes, high blood pressure, we have the dialysis, that's because Albion has so many people who are on dialysis. So that was one thing that came to this. Obesity, and track 33 and 36, census track 33 and 36, are you familiar with 33 and 36? Those areas are the areas that we're looking at with the Population Health Alliance Task Force, and that's out of Battle Creek under the Kellogg Foundation. But 33 and 36 is where we really need to look. We are not looking at social determinants in terms of, in terms of the age of a person, or the ages of student, or the older people versus, we're looking at what is needed in our community, from children to senior citizens. So those are, the health disparities is number two, and of course, number three, of course, is the housing, housing and development, and trying to get our housing up to code, especially involving the lead that is impacting our children.
Thank you so much. Councilman French, if you want to go back to number four, please.
What motivates you and what does success look like to you?
What motivates me is my internal drive. No one tells me, you know, we have problems. I do my research, I get involved, and I work. I work, Saturday was a hard day, moving tables and everything, but I work to, because I know this is an awareness for our community, we haven't been celebrating that very long, but my motivation is my internal drive, and my success is, my success is lowering our numbers, so we're not looked at in the county as, oh, Albion has the highest number of this, Albion has the highest number of that. If we can do something to bring about awareness and lower the numbers and get more people involved, get more exercise, more healthcare programs underway, and make sure the people know what programs are available. I mean, if you need glasses, you shouldn't, you should be able to know, I can go to the Lions Club and get half of the funding, and I can go to Fountain Clinic and get half of the funding. So there is no need in, you know, keeping that to themselves over in Battle Creek, you know, on the other side of the county. Sometimes we get the crumbs, that's because we're not at the table sometimes.
Mayor Prokem Jackson. Right, number five.
About America, can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Davis, why do you think we aren't at the table?
Lack of awareness sometimes, lack of involvement. I must say, City Manager Snyder has come on board, she is on several committees, we haven't had representation at for a while, for a long while, so she is at the table, so she will be made aware of things that are going on in Battle Creek area, and I can see that, because Battle Creek carries a lot of weight, they're larger, more money is coming in, they have the foundation there, and so, you know, when people are planning, they're thinking about their own, and if we're not there, now that she is or whomever, if we're not there, we don't know about it, so we don't, you know, when I said sometimes we don't know what we don't know, and that's exactly true, you know, there is money available we've never heard of, okay? It is getting better, but there is more work to be done.
Understand that, now, what would you do, or have you seen? Better question. How does that information get to the people? Do you think it's currently getting to the people?
No, I don't. Oh, can I, shall I answer?
Well, we need to be fair.
Okay, we'll come back.
Asking all the same questions of the candidates. Mayor Prokem Jackson.
Yes, number five, what positive things do you feel you bring to the table to help move Albion forward?
I bring my positive energy, I bring my positive spirit, I bring my experience, because I've been on boards, I've been on a lot of committees, I know the citizens, I know the county, I know the community, so I bring an awareness that may not be, may not be present with incoming people in the community. Luckily, and well liked, I think, and I can relate to a lot of different people on a lot of different levels, so I think my experience far exceeds a lot of the, you know, not necessarily the other candidates, is beneficial in getting things done in a logical manner without trying to reinvent the wheel, because if you're at the table, if you know people, that's a plus, that's a plus, and where I go, Albion goes.
So lastly, Ms. Davis, why are you the best person to represent the residents of Precinct 5?
I think I'm the best person to represent because I'm a longtime citizen of Albion, I've raised my children in Albion, I've worked at Albion Public Schools, I wasn't one of the employees who drove in and drove out of our school district, I played an intricate role in our school district, I have chosen to live here for a long time, so I think experience, my experience, my motivation, my interest in the community are all pluses in terms of bringing a positive spirit, and my ability to work with people, you know, my ability to, to, not necessarily forgive and let go, but to agree to disagree, you know, sometimes people do agree, and my professional background is in counseling, so I know how to listen, I know how to listen without getting my personal self involved in the situation, I know how to listen, to understand, and to take notes, and to follow the directions of my constituents, and I do plan to do that if I get the position in terms of, I thought about doing something along the lines of a youth advisory council from Precinct 5, as well as, I like what, I like what Linda Lanu did in terms of the communication channel, and I also like Gary Tompkins, he has the communications channel that, either electronically or in writing, that I think we can piggyback on, and not just for Precinct 5, but that's something that we can do as a council, and all precincts can get that information, you know, so I think working together and collaboration is the key, and I'm the person to do that.
Thank you so much. So we are gonna switch out at this time. And I believe Yvonne's out in the hallway, we can direct you where to sit. Hello, Mr. Johnson, thank you for being with us this evening.
What's the official order here?
Well, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take this opportunity to ask some questions of you.
Okay.
We're gonna go around council chambers and just ask you questions in order, so you can, you know, feel free to take your time to answer each question, we're trying to keep about two minutes, even though we don't have a timer going, but I will go ahead and start.
Can I pass? I brought a printed resume for.
Oh, sure. Hand them over. So Mr. Johnson, what would you like us and Precinct 5 residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
My desire to serve just comes from a heart for the community of Albion, been involved in different things since coming to Albion in 2016. I don't know if you remember, we did the David Paul Brooks Party in the Park back in 2018, that was the first kind of major event I was involved with. Since then, I became pastor at Network Family Church just north of town, and then we've been involved with Harrington Elementary School a lot this year, so just being part of the community and helping out is kind of motivated me, motivated me to come here tonight.
Awesome, thank you. Councilman Williams.
Mr. Johnson, what is your level of involvement in the community?
Oh, okay, currently, we, my involvement in the community has been with Harrington Elementary School. Throughout the school year, we'd go there and we'd take snacks and different things for the teachers, just to show them support, to let them know that the community is in favor of them and what they do, and then we wrap that up by hosting the Day of Appreciation for the Employees at Harrington Elementary School. We brought in everybody that would come, and we honored them with gifts, and we presented the Employee of the Year Award with a plaque, so I've been involved that way for the community as of late, and so we're doing something for public safety, we're just giving those guys things throughout the summer, cold drinks, just stock in their little refrigerator over there so that they have something on these hot days, you know, to troll them, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed. Okay, please describe your public service experience.
Oh, I just did, that's what I told Councilwoman Williams, that's what I've been up to in Albion lately, so, do you have another question?
Councilwoman Lawler. What motivates you, and does success, what does success look like to you?
What does success look like to me? Success to me looks like, personally, it's personal improvement, gaining new knowledge, having new experiences. On a ministry level, it's how I affect people's lives and touch hearts, and as far as employment goes, I work full-time, success is feeling at the end of the day like I've done everything I could.
Thank you so much.
What positive things do you feel you will bring to the table to help Albion move forward?
Positive things I believe I could help the council with is, I have no political agenda, no particular alliances, my heart is to help fill in this role for as long as needed. I don't plan on using this as any kind of stepping stone or anything else, I just wanna help out where I can and fill this role for the rest of the term.
Thank you.
What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help this council move forward?
One thing I'm capable of doing to help this council move forward? I am a peacemaker type personality, I'm not confrontational, speak up when I feel like something's going awry or amiss, but I'm not going to be the type of person to come in and stir things up for the state or stir things up, you know, so I believe that the city council's role is to help the citizens of Albion with infrastructure and helping conduct the business of the city, it's not meant or intended for personal gain.
Thank you. What do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
Top three priorities for the city, I would love to see the roads improved, and then I'd love to see a favorable light shine on the council and the community, there's not a lot of good being said about the council, so I'd like to be able to positively affect that, and then I'd like to help bridge the gap between the relationship with our public safety officers and the community, so I believe there's a wedge there that doesn't need to be there.
And lastly, why are you the best person to represent the residents of Precinct 5?
I can't say that I'm the best person, I can say confidently that I am a very good candidate, but I don't know the other candidates, so I can't speak for how well they do, so if council feels like one of the other candidates would do a better job, then, you know, please bring them in.
And any last comments that you would like to leave with us before we move on? And any last comments that you would like to leave with us before we move on to the next person?
Um, just, I just pray that you guys exercise wisdom and discretion and you make this decision. And I appreciate the opportunity to throw my hat in the ring. And I just want to say thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hi. So let me make sure I'm pronouncing it's Elise, Alisa or Alyssa?
Alyssa.
Alyssa lives here?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, so Alyssa, we are going to take the opportunity to ask questions of you, to get you, to know you a little bit better.
Okay.
And so I will go ahead and start. What would you like us and Precinct 5 residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
Okay, um, well, we, my family and I, we moved here in November. And we actually bought Schuler Arts, their old place. So we, uh, we bought it directly from Pam and Noble. So we talked a lot with them about just the desire to help the community and continue some sort of business or nonprofit or something out of that property to continue helping the community. So really, just from the get-go with moving here, we kind of just had a heart to be involved in the city and really invest in the people and the community. So that's kind of how we got here. And then I have young children, so right away, we kind of had challenges of figuring out the school situation and all of those different things. And I was a little disheartened, to be honest. We moved from a nice school district and all those things. So with immediately seeing some of those issues, I think the instinct was maybe to be discouraged or complain, but instead of that, I thought that eventually I'd really like to just be involved and maybe see ways that I could help. So that's why I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes. Um, what is your level of involvement in the community?
Sure. Um, right now, not a ton outside of the fact that my husband and I pastor at Freeway Church on B Drive. So we're just really involved with that and sort of establishing ourselves there. But besides that, we really have just sort of joined Facebook groups, tried to visit businesses, tried to meet people, tried to figure out who to talk to, to figure out what's going on in the community, things like that. But because we've been here such a short time, it's been a little hard to get really involved in things since we're also trying to just get to know our church too. And so it's been slow, but like, we're slowly getting to know people and finding ways to be involved.
Would you please describe any public service experience?
Sure. Um, so I've been, yeah, that's a loaded question. So, so I'm, I am a pastor. I'm a licensed pastor. I've had, I, this is the first time I'm actually hired as a pastor, though. So my husband's always been the one that's kind of carried the official role, and I've just always been the one serving. So basically, I've been serving like since I was a teenager in various churches and community things. I also had some internships that were very community-centered. I volunteered with the Minnesota Literacy Council. I lived out in Minnesota for a while and was also an intern at a crisis pregnancy center. Lots of different things. I've also, I have, I have a degree that kind of had a focus where it took me overseas a lot. So I've also been really involved in other countries and service-type projects overseas, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lawler?
What motivates you and what does success look like to you?
Well, I'm pretty motivated by goals. I'm pretty Type A, so if I decide, and I don't know if you do Enneagram, but I'm very Type III, so like, I'm really into just achieving things and setting goals and meeting them. So for me, success looks like achieving the goals you set forth. It looks like creating clear goals, goals that are purposeful. So I really like to do things with intentionality, so not like just for the numbers, but for overall growth of something, that type of success.
Thank you. Councilwoman French?
What positive things do you feel you will bring to the table to help move Albion forward?
Positive things? I feel like I'm generally a pretty, a pretty positive person to begin with. I, um, I'm, I've worked with lots of different people groups and things, both overseas and in the States. So I feel like I can do a really good job of relating to a lot of people and cooperating with lots of different types of people. And I feel like that's a big asset. Also, my faith, I think, plays a big role in being positive and not wanting to put, I, I mean, you'll never see me put somebody down publicly or behind closed doors, anything like that. So, um, so yeah, I think that's probably a big asset, is that my morals are pretty strong.
Thank you.
What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help this council move forward?
That's an excellent question. To be honest, I mean, I've never served on a city council before, so I'm a little naive to all of the things that you do. So I mean, I guess the best perspective I can bring is that I don't have a lot of experience with it, so maybe I bring a fresh perspective, not having baggage or anything dragged in from anything else before. I don't, I don't know a whole lot, so I'm kind of fresh meat.
What do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
For the city? Well, um, I'll just, I'll say the thing, the first few things I probably noticed, I guess, like when I moved in, I think, um, I think the roads seemed to be an issue. I think the parks are wrecked, whatever's happening with that seems to be a big issue. The communication aspect of that, for sure. And then, um, I noticed, or I learned rather quickly, the animosity within the city. So I assume there's a lack of unity happening somehow. So that was something I found out quite quickly.
And lastly, why are you the best person to represent the residents of Precinct 5?
I come with a fresh perspective. I've got all my kids in school finally, so I have a little bit of time that I can commit to something that I feel like is worthy of committing time to. And like I said before, I'm pretty Type A, so I'll, I'm pretty committed and determined to make a difference. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
And any other last comments that you would like to leave for council?
I don't think so.
Well, we appreciate you being in front of us to answer our questions, and we'll go ahead and swap you out for the next one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me.
Yes. So we're just going to take this opportunity to go around council to ask questions of you. We are trying to keep everybody to about two minutes per question. So I will go ahead and start. What would you like us and Precinct 5 residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
Yeah, so I'll start with my name, I guess. My name is Christina. I do go by Chrissy. I guess I could start with how I got here. I moved to Albion on December 13th of 2021. So I've been here seven months. I got my undergraduate degree at the University of Pittsburgh, where I studied history and political science. I was ready to go in the Peace Corps, and then the pandemic happened. So that didn't happen for me, and I scrambled to find something to do. And I ended up at Slippery Rock University of Pennsylvania, where I got a master's degree in secondary education. Teaching high school students unfortunately was not for me, but I applaud everybody who does that every day. We're all heroes. And with my connections with the Bonner Leader Program as a graduate assistant at Slippery Rock University, my supervisor, Dr. Ashley Woodson, who has turned out to be an incredible mentor for me, got me a job here to help develop the Build Albion Fellows Program. We are doing the Bonner Model for that now, to continue to develop that. And I love my job so far. Recently purchased a home in the Albion community, so I am committed and engaged in the community. Excited to be here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes. Um, what is your level of involvement in the community?
Um, so I am the primary volunteer coordinator for the School for Public Purpose and Professional Advancement at Albion College. So in my role there, I have, I work closely with our AmeriCorps chapter, with the White House Nature Center. I have worked with the SOU Foundation to recruit volunteers for events. I work with the Community Table regularly to recruit about, recruit volunteers for events. I helped recruit some volunteers for Difference Makers with other SPP faculty and staff. Recruited some volunteers for the June 8th cleanup for Councilwoman Reed. Apologies for those miscommunications there. I'm glad the White House Nature Center could collaborate with us and we could make that happen. And my role in the community is only going to grow as I continue to develop community partnerships on behalf of Albion College. And I look forward to be a leader in that capacity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed? What motivates you and what do you, let's see, I can't see. What motivates you and what does success look like to you?
I think what motivates me is ensuring that the Albion community, there is some sort of economic opportunity. People can live here safely and really want to build homes and build, build their roots here, right? It's a problem not only in our community that I'm seeing, but across the United States in small towns where we have young, we're not attracting young professionals, and young people are actually leaving our areas. So how do we, how do we ensure that young people are going to stay here? How do we ensure that people are going to want to have families and live in this community? That's what motivates me. And you asked what success looks like?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What's a success, what's, what success looks like to me if I were on the city council? So I'm 22 years old. I am not very old. I've never held public office before, but I'm willing to learn. Success is working in teams. Success is asking questions when you don't know something. So if I don't know a term, I'm not going to sit there and pretend that I don't, that I know it, right? Because my votes have implications, right? Especially on my constituents and those who I, who I'm representing. Success is asking people who have served on the city council, continue to serve, for help and guidance, right? Because you've been here longer than I have, and you might know better than me in some situations.
Councilwoman Lawler, if you go back to number three, please. Please describe any public service experience.
So I haven't held, obviously, public office before. I'm pretty young for that. Excited for this opportunity, though. Really eager. But I have been involved, I'm the primary person who organizes service events at Albion and work with community members and council members moving forward to make sure that these events happen and we have students there. So I have like increased my civic literacy in the past and looking forward to doing that. But I want to serve in a more sustained capacity, and that's what the city council can offer me at this time.
What positive things do you feel you will bring to the table to help move the city of Albion forward?
Yeah, so I really think that my age can be a good factor here and the fact that I'm a recent, a recent, uh, community member, right? So I genuinely believe that young people deserve representation in public office. And I have new ideas and different perspectives based on my age. And I really think that that could be a benefit to the council and really diversify the people we have serving.
What is, I'm sorry, I'm laughing because it's like I probably should be able to say this question without looking at it. What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help the council move forward?
Hmm, the council move forward? I think just focusing on, um, really tap, like tackling the needs of the community, not just based on our precincts all the time, but like what the community needs as a whole. I mean, focusing on our mutual goals and values to really push our initiatives and programs forward.
Chrissy, what do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
So I think my top priority is improving youth and civic relations. I recently co-authored a grant with Linda Lanu, Marquita Frost, and Dr. Ashley Woodson to advance our Harrington Mentoring Program. We actually got more money than we applied for. So it's nice to be validated, to have our work validated and to know that it's important. And really, what we're doing is worthwhile. It's really nice to have that validation. And I'm going to be leading that project, and I'm really, really excited for that. We're really big on like improving access to education for marginalized populations. Another one is probably just general economic development and the cost of infrastructure repairs. For example, so if we, I think I read this, this was the proper number. So if we were to do a road repair, for example, and we needed to replace the sewage lines and pipes and all that, it's like a million dollars a mile. And we have, what, 50 miles of roads in Albion? That's a lot of money, and based on the recent census, when we lost 1,000 people, that's a ton of money in having these conversations on how we're going to pay for these things. And also, just opportunities for people to make them stay here and to make Albion an attractive place to move to. I think these conversations are very important, and so are these initiatives to really drive economic prosperity and opportunity in our community. And also just improving community and college relations. We all know that those are not the best. And I really think we need to focus on mutually beneficial partnerships and programs moving forward. And I really look forward to being a leader in that conversation.
And lastly, why are you the best person to represent the residents of Precinct 5?
Yeah, so I think back to my age, I really think that I diversify the council. I am a homeowner. I have roots here, and I'm committed to making Albion a better place. I'm here for at least five years. I probably won't be here forever since I am 22. And this is my first real job, right? But while I'm here, I am committed, and I'm committed to working with the community. I'm committing, I'm committing to improving community partnerships, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you.
So at this time, we will go ahead and open up the floor for public comments. If we have anybody in the gallery that would like to step forward, we just need to name your address, and you have three minutes to speak upon what we have relevant for our study session today. Anyone want to make a public comment? Is that right? So, uh, move it, yep, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not a public on the council, so I just want to thank all four of you for taking the time and the effort to, not only to come be part of our meeting, but also to prepare all the preparations you did, whether it's filling out the application, giving thoughtful consideration to our questions, and for being willing to step up to serve your community, regardless of how many years you've been here or how little time you've been here. Your willingness to serve is a testament to what's good about Albion, that we have people from all walks of life and life experiences who are willing to step up and serve the community. Because with, with that sort of service mentality, Albion will be better. So whoever we choose, we will be better. So thank you so much. So thank you so much for all that you do.
And I believe all of us sitting here on council, you know, echo that sentiment. We appreciate your willingness to serve our community. So moving forward, we are going to take this information, and we will come back for our July 5th council meeting. At that time, we will deliberate and discuss and make a final decision. The candidate that we end up selecting will then get sworn in to sit for that actual council meeting. So are there any other council member comments? Councilwoman Lawler?
Thanks so much. I just wanted to, like you say, echo what Councilmember French was saying. Thank you for just coming out and being concerned with what's happening in Albion. And I also just want to thank Ms. Christina for just putting out there the economic development things that you're interested in, the community development things that you're interested in. And those things are really important to me. So hopefully, I can ask a few more questions about it. We didn't have time today, but I'm sure I'll try to find you somewhere to ask a few more questions about it. But thank you so much for everybody coming out.
Thank you all.
Yes, I'm liking that word echo. But what I want to echo on is that I just love the diversity that we had today. So you did not make our decisions easy. You will, we will have to put in some thought into the process and make sure that we're picking the right candidate for Five to sit with us. That's all right. We can do something with that. At this present time, to help us move forward and be better than what we are. So I thank you all once again for coming out.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
City Clerk Camigo?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinert?
Yes. Meeting or study session adjourned at 6:53 PM. Be back at 7 o'clock for a regular council.